Any council meeting in order? Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Shuldiz.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
And Councilmember Osmus.
Here.
And Councilmember Butterfield.
Here.
Councilmember O'Brien is excused. Seven present, one absent.
Thank you, Renee.
Eight present, one absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. Any questions, discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
All right, there's no proclamation, right? It's just a... Okay. Consent items, Renee, city clerk.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, for today's meeting, I have for your consideration the city council minutes of April 1st, 2024, the planning commission minutes of April 3rd, 2024, as a draft, the municipal utilities commission's meetings minutes of April 8th, 2024, agricultural rent reimbursement, tract 7, agricultural rent reimbursement, hay ground, reschedule the public hearing for the sale or the transfer of the land of Kira, Wilmer Care Center, from May 6th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m., and the accounts payable report from March 27th, 2024, through April 9th, 2024. And for your information, we also have the planning commission memorandum to the city council, the March 2024 building permit report, the zoning appeals board, Cletus Frank, and the director's reports.
And that's an appointment, the zoning appeals board, so... Right?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second discussion. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on the zoning appeals board member. I mean, he'll do a good job, but his son, it works in the planning department. Is that going to be a conflict of interest?
I wouldn't think so.
You never know.
We will... So tonight is just for information, and then the appointment would be at the next council meeting. So we have looked into it, and right at this moment, we did not find anything to establish that there'd be a conflict of interest, but we will dive further into that before the actual appointment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That passes. Next is the open forum, and we have one individual, Jason Butler, who's going to speak. Jason, you got three minutes. Give your name and address for me.
Yep, I'm Jason with City Line Towing, 124 Benson Avenue, Southwest. I know you guys are going to cringe when I bring up this topic. The last six months or so, we've probably had, I know of four, maybe five, break-ins in my impound lot, coming in from underneath the bridge. The last one occurred this weekend in the tune of $10,000 in damage to cars in my impound lot. Being at the industry I'm in, with the high-risk insurance, I can't claim this because I'll lose my insurance. So I'm self-insuring this. This is roughly $40,000 out of my pocket in the last six months. I've talked to a couple of you council members today. I talked to Leslie, I've talked to Assistant Chief Anderson. I've talked to Leslie about this a few times. I know you guys don't want to let me put up a fence, so I'm asking you guys to put up a fence. Something's got to get done. It's just, they have cover, they can do anything they want back there. Nobody sees them. My fence is full of graffiti back there. It's just, it's just, it's mayhem. And nobody sees it. There's plenty of police presence. It's nothing with the police. The police are at my place all the time, or driving by all the time. It just, I can't, I can't keep doing it like this. And I'm losing a lot of money. I can't put razor wire up. My insurance won't allow it. Plus, it looks pretty hideous downtown to have razor wire. So I'm asking if we could put this onto the agenda and put some serious effort into it, and look into something that we can do, because $40,000 a year is... And if it's money, I'll pay for the fence. I mean, I don't, at this point, anything will help. We need, I need to do something. And I'm afraid to invest in the other side if I can't even keep one side secure. So if we can look into this in a close amount of time, I'm not asking to do it tomorrow, but if we could put some effort into this and see what we can do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jason. All right. We'll go to the public hearing, and this is a consideration to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of 5.54 acres of parcel 95-921-5690 to Kira. And Christopher, or Leslie?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, the council was to conduct two public hearings. One was for the sale of the 5.54 acres to Kira, and the second was for the conveyance of Center Care Wilmer Care Center, formerly known as the Rice Care Center, to Kira. At the last council meeting, Robert Scott, Attorney Robert Scott, mentioned that the purchase agreement could be combined for the two land sales. This was just for efficiency purposes. There are still two separate ordinances for the Kira sales that will require separate council actions. We just wanted to make that very clear. The public hearing for conveyance of the Center Care Wilmer Care Center land and building has been rescheduled to the regular council meeting, May 6th. Tonight's public hearing is regarding the ordinance between the city of Wilmer and Kira to purchase 5.54 acres of publicly-owned land, parcel 95-921-5690, south of Swanson Fields and west of the Care Center, Wilmer Care Center, on Wilmer Avenue. Council approved the purchase agreement with Kira, February 20th, 2024. This was to develop a senior housing apartment complex. As noted in one of our project goals from the mayor Housing Task Force in 2022, it was encouraged for overhoused senior families to vacate their older, larger homes in favor of new homes that better fit their age and lifestyle, that we encourage all kinds of development. Wilmer's median income is $60,000 annually. This project will serve every income level within the city of Wilmer, with no requirement that the resident would have to move after spending down their hard-earned retirement. Kira also agreed to partner with the city to install the stormwater pond on the site as identified in the August 2012 watershed management plan. Concerns about the size, depth, and location of the proposed stormwater pond were raised by our partnering agencies in the early March 2024. We share the same priority as WMU, which is to protect our water supply and well field servicing the southwestern area of the city. City staff and WMU is waiting for further analysis of any potential risks from the stormwater pond location. The analysis will provide more clarity to the council for the stormwater capacity of the proposed site may recommend one of the following recommendations. It will probably, it could proceed with the purchase agreement, proceed with the ordinance as is, amend the purchase agreement, amend the ordinance, or terminate the transaction. After several discussions with WMU, we mutually agree there is a need to provide a comprehensive analysis of the site at a future public meeting. City staff and WMU are requesting the following actions to be considered by the city council: Let the city council open the public hearing tonight, since it has been previously advertised to be held at this date and time. After the public hearing has been heard, after the public has been heard, offer a motion to reconvene the hearing at the regularly scheduled council meeting, May 20th, at 6:30 p.m. We are committed to collaborating with our engineers, Wilmer Municipal Utilities, Minnesota Department Health, as well as WMU's well head consultant, Carlson and McBean. I will stand for any questions from the council at this time.
All right, any questions, council? Otherwise, I'm going to open the hearing, and then, at the end of that public comment, I would be looking for a motion to reconvene the hearing on May 20th to allow staff and MUC time to review the project with their consultants and come back with some recommendations. So is there any other discussion before I open the hearing? All right, if not, it's open to the public for comment. Anybody want to speak? Yes, give your name and address, please.
My name is Doug Gillis, Hanson Drive, Southwest. Mr. Mayor, council members, I am not in favor of anybody to build in the park for many reasons. Utmost, our drinking water is very important. I don't want to take any chances with our valuable drinking water. Folks are wanting farmers to watch their field fertilizer runoff, and here, we have an easy no to saving a water resource. Second, we don't need additional water mitigation or retention pond. The park is a natural water retention and filtration environment. We don't need Kira nor Wilmer taxpayer dollars building something I don't think is necessary. After hard rain, water is standing in the park, but goes away in a couple of days without further mitigation. Third, I love the Stingers. I do not want to chance that they move because residents complain about fireworks or stadium lights or anything else. Kira, I'm not saying don't build. I'm saying not there. Build by the YMCA. Folks can walk to the Y and to the upcoming community center. The CCT bus can get residents to your care facility. Last year, this topic came up and was declined. This year, it is okay. Someone is trying to push this approval through, it seems, without regard to Wilmer residents' best interests. I wonder why? Is it money? What's the penalty for a conflict of interest? I think any city board or council member has the oath to report any conflict of interests. I pray they do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody else?
Joe Riddler, 1912 20th Avenue, Southwest. I spoke on behalf of the stormwater issues, and talking with some council people today and other people, you're creating more problems than what we have. I've heard that you want to build a pond, and then some of the runoff go into the other water detention pond that we have south of the park. That's already developed to handle what's there today, not anything more. I don't think you folks took me serious when Hawk Water, or Hawk Creek Watershed doesn't want any more of our water. I don't think you guys are taking this serious. The other thing is, I've been on city committees. You had three, four committees that said no, and yet you were pushing this through. What would you do if you were on those committees donating your time? And you folks are snubbing them. This is not right. The other thing is, is that in some of the discussions I had today, it sounds like you're trying to take some of the money off the sale and take care of some of your other water, stormwater problems. That's not right. You're selling us out. Water's an issue. You just sold land to Jennio. They're growing. They're going to need more water. They use a lot of water. Think of that. We have problems with magnesium in our water. That's why we're bringing water from up north down. So think what you guys are going to be doing here. Don't think about the dollars. Kira said they were going to buy the place, whether the land sale was there or not. And now you're trying to do a twofer on us. I'm sorry, this is not correct. A lot of people I talked to, they said this has got capital S for stink. It stinks what's going on. This is not the way the city operates. My question is, I know a lot of past mayors, they're dead and gone. They would roll in their grave to see how this process is being taken. Think about that. This is not positive, folks. No.
Joe, could you fill out the...
Yeah, I will later.
All right, anybody else? This is your time to speak, if you want to speak.
I'm Brian Hurley, and I'm with 17th Street, Southwest, Wilmer. One of the things, most of my points have been addressed by fellow citizens, too. One of the pieces, though, that I look at is this plan seems ill-thought because there's also no room for Kira to expand. When you look at this area, there is no room to grow. It is a single spot, and that will be it. There is no room for them to grow or to change as time and as growth is going to be needed into the future. As we have seen other areas be pressured with increased need for senior services, Wilmer is a spot of leadership that has been looked to, and there is only going to be room to need to grow. Bethesda has done this over 40 years. My mother worked for Bethesda for years, and we saw, as originally, you had the Heritage Center and Pleasant View. And as we have, I've lived it. I saw that area grow and expand and growing to what it is today, and it's wonderful to see that expansion. Kira has no place to grow once they are there. So I understand the need for it, for the sale of the Rice Care Center, but where are they going to go next? Because you can't expand anymore once you're there. So other areas should be looked at so that we can see this, so that if Kira is going to be a viable business long into the future, that they're going to be able to grow and expand the way Bethesda has. I also have been disappointed in seeing that the Parks Department has not been consulted like they have in the past. Based on what I've been reading in the Tribune, it seems like that has really been ignored in this process, and that bothers me. They are a major stakeholder. A lot of people, and a lot of fellow friends, family members, citizens that I've talked to, they've all said the same thing. Why? Why are we avoiding these people? Why is the Parks Department, their statement's made in 2023? Why are they not being considered? Why is this moving forward? And unfortunately, I don't have a good answer when they ask that question. And that part bothers me the most. So I ask that, I really hope that this deal is thrown out because I don't believe it's a good fit. I hope that we can find a solution, but I don't believe this is the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
Jennifer Eisley, 1304 18th Street. I don't have too much else to add. I agree with everything else that has been said. But I do know that quality of life and quality of cities are rated by how much green space they have. If we build in one of our parks, it takes away from that, takes away from what families enjoy. Being on 18th Street, I can tell you that all year long, that park is used. I can see right out my back window, from one of the properties that faces the park, right out my back window, I see families, walkers, kids, people of all ages are in that park all the time. They are on the path, they are... I can hear them. I can hear them laughing, playing. They're in the park all the time. And building, paving over all that green space would be a mistake. It takes away from that space for people on that side of town. And where would they go? They'd have to drive to another park. That's not the point of having green space and parkland. And that takes away from our quality of life here in Wilmer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else? Ken?
Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Kent Scoglan, 218th Avenue, Northeast, here in Wilmer. I am the current chairman of the Park and Rec Board, serving my second term. The first one was under Dale Johnson. Wilmer has a great park system, thanks to Al Swanson, Dale Johnson, Steve Brizendine, and now Rob Baumgarten. And there's a park rating. Wilmer's rated like 88 as far as parks go in the state. And that means that a big percentage of our people are within approximately 10-minute walk of a park somewhere in town. So we have some great going there. Naturally, you would know that I'm against this project as what first took place last summer when the Park and Rec Board turned down the proposal that was brought before us at that time. So as Brian mentioned, all of a sudden, this one pops up, and we're wondering what happened? You know, not that we have the final say, we totally understand that, and that's you folks. But, yeah, what happened? Why all of a sudden now this one is a go? Why the other one wasn't? And nobody really said anything about that. As you drive out west on Wilmer Avenue, you get to that part of town. It's wide open, it's great to have green space. You see the parks on both sides of the road. It's a great area, granted that 5 and 1/2 acres is currently not being used for any youth activities of any sort that I'm aware of. But back in the day, it was used, and maybe it will be used again. Our Park and Rec Board is having a meeting coming up this week. We're going to talk about goals and plans for the future. And who knows, maybe that would be a great spot for something that would look a lot better, that would fit in with everything more so than a three-level building out there. So I thank you for your time. One other thought. Kira is, as part of the agreement, has stated they would pay 60% of the stormwater project. Does anybody have an idea how much that dollar-wise is? Is it a quarter million? Is it 2 million? Does Kira know? Seems to me, if you're going to put together a purchase agreement, you should have an idea what you're going to be paying. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, council people. Hello, my name is Megan Gillis. I have lived in Wilmer for 20 years, surprising. I feel like I'm getting really old with that. That's my adult life here. All of that time has been spent in the southwest part of Wilmer. I've purchased two homes in that area. I'm watching my kids grow up, my two daughters. We love that park. We have spent our kids walking along those long stretches where there are no cars that are going to pop into you out of their driveways. It is so nice to have that long stretch when they're learning how to ride their bikes or they're running free. The only thing I have to worry about is if there are cars jumping the curb, but hopefully, we don't have to worry about that too often. We're raising our daughters here, and they attend Wilmer Public Schools. We are invested in this community with the diversity that it has and all of its faults. We have been avid park users. We are members of the St. John's Roadrunners for each club. We take care of seven little free libraries in the community. We're visiting those libraries all the time and seeing the parks. We're in our parks. I come asking you to vote no on the proposed sale of those 5.54 acres of parkland to Kira. I have no problems with Kira, although I question how a company that's been created since in 2022, why would we sell our parkland to a company like that when we have a beautiful corporation, nonprofit, like Bethesda in our community that's been around for a long time? This location is not the right place for this. This project was presented in 2023 to the Parks and Rec Board, as it was said. At that time, Ironbackwin was quoted saying, "I wouldn't be interested in going around the park board directly to the council. That's not how I operate." Hmm. That's exactly what happened this time around. We must have really short memories. The project was screwed around the park board and wasn't even presented to them this time. But it's their parkland that they're supposed to be overseeing. Second, once the parkland is sold and a building placed on that property, there will be no longer that parkland available for our use. It'll be into a hard space. So what happens when the company goes bankrupt? Well, that just happened. In the state of Minnesota, they invested millions into a packaging facility, and the place has gone bankrupt. Right now, you can watch a Stingers game, and you're watching. You can see kids at the playground. You can see across to the other ballfields where more games are being played. Now, we're going to destroy that beautiful view by inserting a building there that's three stories tall? A quote from Rand Middleton, a Parks and Rec Board member. "They don't seem compatible, parkland in a two-story structure. This is green, open space, and it seems to me our board is responsible for doing everything to protect, conserve, and even extend green spaces and recreation in the community. Now, the proposed project is three stories tall. Oh, my." Third, I want myself, my family, and the community to have access to clean drinking water and water for bathing and cooking. You don't mess with water supplies. There is no question about that. We've just dealt with Flint, Michigan, or even if you look at southeastern Minnesota, there's contaminated wells all over in that area due to nitrate. This location is one of the few locations shown in Wilmer that is capable of producing the amount of water Wilmer is projected to need in the future. We just sold land to Jennio. What do you think Jennio needs? They're going to need water. This quote from Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commissioner Carol Lammer states it well. "I just am struggling with why we would want to chance potential issues with the well field out there and going forward. I mean, I struggle with the aquifers and those potentially being harmed by it. And once that happens, I mean, it's all over to resurrect that. I guess as a consumer here in the city, I express a lot of concern. And as a member of this commission also, I express a lot of concern about this being chosen as a place to build something on. You don't mess with water." Fourth, I have been in Wilmer for many rainy periods. I know we have some new city council staff, or city staff. They may not have been here for when we've had our rainy periods, when the roads are all flooded and we're getting signs put up all around there. I have been to the Swanson Fields Complex when it's filled with water. Adding hard surfaces to a space that should be soaking up the water is not a plan, and no one wants a park complex completely filled with stormwater retention ponds. Everywhere you look, you want to see a stormwater retention pond? Let it be grass, let it soak in. Fifth, as I said, Kira was only established very recently. There is no proven track record. And they, we don't know if they're going to stick around to even finish a project or treat employees or the residents well. Let us keep our park space. We can't get our park space back after it is sold. Please vote no to selling.
Thank you, Megan. Next, anybody?
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for having this open conversation. My name is Doug Green, 1801 15th Avenue, Southwest, almost across the street on the south side of the park. south side of the park. I love the park. I'm a walker. I'm one of the many people that use the park for walking, and I hate to lose any green space. I have grandchildren that love to play in the playground that's right up there, and I am very concerned about where that stormwater pond would be built if it's necessary. I'm concerned about safety, I'm concerned even about the need of it. Plus, I'm convinced that there's other places in Wilmer that would accommodate the kind of housing that's being proposed for that five and a half acres. So I just want to express my concern, and I'm in agreement with those who have stood here and have had issues with the idea of building, of selling that property to Kira.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Tisha Ellinter, and I live at 1215th Street Southwest, Wilmer. I don't want to repeat what she said, I agree with. As a senior citizen, I would never move into a place that threatened a city's water supply. That would go against what I believe in. It is wrong to sell this city parkland. Protecting water is a sacred trust, and the park as it is is beloved, beloved, beloved. This is the wisdom for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Tisha. Anybody else?
Hello there, my name is Chris Buzzio, 1515th Avenue Southwest in Wilmer. I'd like to preface my comments by starting to acknowledge that I am a member of the Wilmer Planning Commission. My comments are my own comments and do not reflect the comments of the commission or any of the commissioners who I serve with. So my comments are my own. I want to actually address some of the things that I heard here this evening. And number one is to answer the question I believe the Chairman of the Parks Board started, which is why Mr. Bachman did not come to the Parks Board in this time. I would encourage you to review the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting that this was presented at first. I don't remember the date, I'm sorry. And Mr. By asked Mr. Bachman that question, and his answer was that he was asked to go directly to council. But I encourage you to review the minutes so you get that information directly. I also encourage the city council members to do the same. I also encourage everybody in the room, city council, any members of the public, to review the 2015 Master Parks Plan that the city had created and was presented to them in 2015 that designated that area, Swanson Field Southwest, South Swanson Field, as the next regional park, potentially, the next Robins Island. I think it's important that we spent the time and effort to have that study done. We ought to decide if it's still valuable and what pieces of it are still valuable. Thank you for your time.
Chris, did you write your name down?
Ron Christensen, 1912 Richland Avenue Southwest. Mayor and council members, I just have a quick comment. There are so many reasons to not do that project in that location, but I find it hard you would even be considering it. Please vote this thing down. Please vote it down.
Thanks, Ron. Anybody else?
Dave Dunick, 1015 Eighteenth Street Southwest, Wilmer. Just a couple, everybody's covered pretty much everything. There's a few of us that have been going around getting signatures opposing this plan. And it's interesting, when you knock on someone's door and they come to the door and they kind of look at you and what's, you know, why are you here? You say, "Well, we need your signature on this form because they're trying to sell our parkland." And the first, the most common response to that, "Why would they do that?" And if you're trying to get a lot done, you don't get it done because as soon as you get going, and you say, "Well, I have no idea why they're doing that, why they would sell our parkland." So twenty minutes later, they're still bending your ear, trying to figure out why they're going, why people want to do that. And like I said, everybody's covered everything. The water is the biggest issue. It's such a great piece of property. Why would we sell it? It makes no sense. There's other places that they can build. It would be realized right in the middle of that park. When you come in from, you know, these big tournaments that we have for baseball, softball, whatever, it's amazing, you know, there's people everywhere. They're not only on Swanson Field, but on the south side, they're warming up over there, they're, you know, playing catch, they're hitting the ball around. It's a spot that should be maintained, as is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, can I ask one?
No.
Anybody next? Anybody next?
My name's Owen Mo. I live at 1215th Street Southwest. I'm surprised that there's no cost benefit analysis on this, no economic analysis. The paper had very little information about it. What is the purpose of having zoning laws, having a planning department, and you have land zoned for parks, and then you willy-nilly change it, "Oh, let's go build a three-story building on it"? That doesn't make sense to me. In terms of selling it for $30,000 an acre when land is going for $150,000 an acre for housing and stuff like that, I just don't see the economic justification for it. The park is a very important part of our lives in Wilmer, and it seemed like the thinking and the planning on this was very poor, so I hope you'll reconsider it.
Write your name, Owen. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? If nobody else is going to speak, I would ask for the council to make a motion to reconvene this.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
I have the one letter.
Oh, that's right. And I've got the mark there. Sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Renee.
This letter was submitted by Marion Clements, who lives on Ninth Street Southwest, to Mayor Doug Reese, Leslie Valiant, and city council members. This is in regard to the selling of the property south of Wilmer Avenue to Kira to be further developed into a senior living facility. I cannot believe you are even entertaining the thought. Our number one concern should be our further clean water availability. That wellfield is an absolute treasure, and we should not let it be taken from us by anyone. In the past year or two, Wilmer has had several large apartment complexes constructed, plus Bethesda is planning more units. To sell, if you sell that water field, I will not vote for any of you in the future. I think it is good to sell the therapy suites because the city should not be an owner or in the business of that type of service. It is better for it to be in private ownership. I also have a suggestion for the small city parks, which is located directly across the street from my residence at present. It gets mowed twice a week in the summertime. I think it would be feasible to make it a more wildlife sanctuary by planting prey grasses and flowers. That would be more beneficial to bees, birds, and butterflies. Please don't build an apartment complex in it. Signed, Marion Clements.
Okay, thank you, Renee. As I was starting to say...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make another comment. I don't know who presented this to the council, but it's very easy for you to be sold on something, whoever's sitting at the podium here, whether it's this project or another project. They only need five votes on the council to pass something. And when I was on the council, I always thought of the people that elected me, what they would think with this person was selling. You need to do the same. Every time you're presented something up here, it's so easy to say, five people to say yes. They get sold on it, it's the power of suggestion. It happens every day when you watch TV, listen to the media, read the paper. You're being sold something. Please think about the people that voted you in office, and not particularly the person at the podium, except myself. Thank you.
All right. As I said, I would like to have a motion to reconvene at the regular council meeting on May 20th to allow staff in the MUC to review the project with consultants and bring back further information to the city council before we make that determination.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to continue this hearing on May 20th. Any questions, comments, Tom?
Yeah, on this petition that Mr. Dunick brought up, I was contacted probably within the first second night. You guys were out walking around, asking me about this petition. I had no clue what was going on with it, so I did answer a few questions. Did you turn this petition into the city of Wilmer yet with all the signatures and how many people?
Yeah, I know, yeah, just because we knew that you weren't going to hold on an hour, but we will be getting that into the city all within the next week or so.
Okay. Do you know about how many people signed up on it so far?
You know, I hope the kind of, Mr. Golden seems kind of the ringler, you know, in parks, and he's got a bunch, I know. I've got some, I can get that number for you. He's out of town right now, he was supposed to be here in Las Vegas. But I can get that turned in by the end of this week.
Well, I'm in no rush for it, you know, as long as we would have, you know, later. I would like, kind of curious on how many it was, because I, like I said, I get received phone calls right after you guys started.
Yeah, it was, he asked the other day when I saw him, he said he's got like 300. I used to correct.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Six yeses, one no?
Motion passes. All right, well, thank you for coming tonight and speaking your part. Doug, I'd like to make sure that you get your name on the, yeah?
Joe Ridley didn't sign.
What's that?
Joe Ridley didn't.
He's coming, oh, he's coming.
What about Joe?
He needs to sign too.
He's up there.
We'll go on to regular business and the consideration, resolution to purchase playground equipment from landscape structures for $81,896.77 for Valley Side Park. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Tonight is to approve a resolution to purchase playground equipment for Valley Side Park from landscape structures for the amount of $81,896.77. We reviewed this at the Park and Recreation Board. We had several different park equipment projects, vendors looking at it. We came up with this, this design for Valley Side Park from landscape structure, and the Park Board approved that, would like to move that forward. The funding would come from the 224 Capital Improvement Plan. We do have $175,000 in there allocated for that. And then we would, I'm actually working with Planning Director Christopher Corbett on a grant for the Kaboom for another park. So hopefully, we can look at that to see if that would be something that we can move into another park.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution to purchase.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Vicki?
I just have a question regarding the new parks in general. I've noticed there have been wood chips instead of sand. Is there a reason for that?
For like, when the child falls, we'd rather use the wood chips in the sand because of the compaction factor. It's like, they won't hurt their head. So we have about 10 inches of wood fiber in there, so it's just for preventing falls for injuries.
Okay.
Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero noes.
Motion passes. Rob, tell us about the reallocation of sales tax.
As far as part of the process in order to reallocate those funds, we had to have an ordinance. So tonight is to approve the introduction of an ordinance authorizing relocate, the reallocation of sales tax dollars to the Event and Rec Center project for an outdoor-covered ice rink and call for a public hearing on May 6, 2024 at 6:00 PM and then publish by summary.
We need a motion to introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Being done, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
And Sholdes?
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero noes.
That passes. Now we need a motion to publish by summary.
Move to publish by summary.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
And Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero noes.
That motion carries. Next, Justin, you're going to tell us about the wastewater roof replacement.
Yes, thank you, sir. Good evening and good evening, councilmembers, for your consideration tonight as roof replacement at the main administration building at the old waste treatment plant located on Seventh Street Southeast. This building is still being used for equipment and vehicle storage, office space. It has a mechanic bay, and it also houses data servers for the software system. It has been leaking over the last several years, and we would like to get this taken care of before it gets any worse. We opened bids for this project on March 29th, and we received three bids. The low bid was from West Central Roofing Contractors of, in the amount of $123,971.75. The 2023 CIP included $120,000 from the wastewater treatment fund for this project, and so I'm asking two actions with this. One would be to approve awarding the project to West Central Roofing, and then a second would be to reappropriate the remaining $3,971.75 from the wastewater operating budget over to the roof replacement project. And I will stand for any questions.
So we need a motion to award the project to West Central Roofing first.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
Next, we need a motion. That passes. Next, we need a motion to approve the reappropriation of $3,971.75 to the Budget to Roof Project.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Next is Project 2404B Bid Award, 19th Avenue Path Improvements. Jared?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council. This item has three actions this evening. By way of background, the 19th Avenue Path Improvements Project, we did take bids on that on March 28th. We received two bids. The low bid was submitted by Joe Riley Construction in the amount of $868,380.24. The city applied for and successfully obtained a $500,000 active transportation grant for this, for this project, which extends from 15th Street Southwest to Fifth Street Southeast. So the first item this evening is a resolution awarding that project to Joe Riley Construction. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
So moved.
We got a motion.
Second.
We got a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Ask.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That passes. Next is, we need a motion to approve the ASBID budget for Project 2404B.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That passes. Next, we have a call for a motion to approve the Active Transportation Program Grant Agreement.
So moved.
We got a motion.
Second.
And we got a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That passes. Next is MinDOT Trunk Highway 40 Turn Lanes Work Order. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Work Order Number One is associated with the Trunk Highway 40 Turn Lane Improvement Project. Just by way of reference, the city of Wilmer and MinDOT have a master partnership agreement, which allows both entities to provide services to one another. This work order is related to the property acquisition associated with the Trunk Highway 40 Turn Lane Improvements Project. The project was awarded a $900,000 TED grant, and as part of the improvements, some additional right-of-way will be required to be obtained to accommodate the turn lane and some of the ditching work that MinDOT, MinDOT would like included as part of the project. So this work order allows MinDOT to assist the city with the acquisition of right-of-way for the improvements. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
We need a motion to approve the work order number one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion. Rick?
So which direction does the right-of-way? Is it west of Genio?
Uh, the... Yes, yes, in the vicinity of where the MB Rail purchased the property.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's the turn lane. Yep.
Any other? Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That passes. Thank you, Jared. Tom, we need an authorization sale of GEO Bonds 2024A.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight for your consideration of a resolution calling for a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the improvement of various street improvements within the city of Wilmer, within the city of Wilmer, as well as the purchase of some equipment. The bonds would be 2024 series. The resolution on the public hearing would include levying taxes for the payment for the future debt service of the bonds. The ordinance is included in your packet beginning on page 163, and also included in the packet is a calendar for our bond sale for the year. Tonight, on April 15, we're introducing the ordinance and calling for the public hearing at our next council meeting on May 6. The council will hold the public hearing authorizing the sale of the bonds not to exceed $11 million. Approximately a month later, on June 3, we're projecting the actual sale of the bonds where we'd take bids, and then council would consider awarding the bonds that evening during the scheduled city council meeting. And then a few weeks later, June 27, we'll receive the proceeds and settlement of the bonds. Just kind of give you an overview of the, the process.
So we need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale of these GEO bonds. If we want to do streets.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
Then we got a second. Discussion.
This establishes a public hearing too, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That motion passes. Thank you, Tom. Next is a resolution to acknowledge donation for the first quarter of 2024. Renee, city clerk?
I'm looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the acknowledging the donations for the first quarter of 2024. Those donations include $100 from Todd and Jeff Paffraths for the 2024 Father Daughter Dance, $100 from Karen Birkey for the CERT Fund, $200 from West Central Connection Chorus for the 2024 Father Daughter Dance, $200 from Lehman Construction Incorporated for the Father Daughter Dance of 2024, $200 from the American Door Works for the 2024 Father Daughter Dance, $250 from Marcus Construction for the Wilmer Community Center, $400 from Waltz for the 2024 Father Daughter Dance, $800 from the Candy Eye Power Charitable Trust for the Wilmer Community Center, and $1,755.39 for the bagging event for the Wilmer Police Explorers.
We need a motion approving. Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
We got a second. Discussion. Audrey?
Just wanting clarification, when it doesn't designate it towards a specific event and only to the Wilmer Community Center, does that go into our general fund then?
Does that go into our donation fund for use for the community center?
So it isn't for a specific activity, it's just for the community center?
General operation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
That passes. Leslie, request for work session?
Yes, council, we would like to schedule a work session for Monday, April 29 at 6:00 PM. This would be held at the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Auditorium. It will be regarding bonding review. We will have Doug Green here from Baker Tilly to review the bonding process and our current bonds. Broadband also will be updated to you at that time, and we will also review the assessment policy. Any questions? Can we do that?
We need a motion to approve the work session.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion. Discussion.
So we're going to get all that done in one workshop?
You're going to work hard.
We are. Okay.
Our staff is going to work harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Ask.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
Anybody got community pride announcements? That passes. Community pride announcements? We'll go, we're going to go into closed session then. The legal basis for closing the meeting, this portion of the regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3C. The following real property will be discussed separately in closed session. Parcel 95-003-5420. Parcel number 95-003-5410. Parcel number 95-003-5400. Parcel number 95-003-5390. Parcel number 95-003-5380. Parcel number 95-003-5370. Parcel number 95-003-5360. We need a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Seven yeses, zero nos.
Ready? The city council is now in closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3C. The time is 7:33 PM. And in addition to city council, also present in the session are Leslie Valiant, city administrator, Renee Larson, city clerk.